As it states in the agenda is consideration of Joint Harbor Advisory Board Planning Commission Subcommittee Work Product. Both these bodies have been working on this topic for quite some time. On working waterfronts and Measure D for inclusion in the city's general plan and local coastal plan program and zoning code updates. For those of you that may not be aware, the city is engaged in updating its general plan and its local coastal plan. That's a big effort that's been going on for some time and I believe is scheduled to conclude this year.
It is. We should be done with the effort late summer, early fall, sometime around September.
Okay, great. So we have both bodies here. We also have two staff members here from the city. We have Scott Graham, the Community Development Director, and Eric Endersby, the Harbor Department Director. So we'll begin by establishing our respective quorums. And the Harbor Advisory Board is duly constituted with five of its seven members here, and so we have a quorum present.
And as far as the Planning Commission goes, we have four of our five members here, so we have a quorum to start the meeting.
Okay. We do have a presentation for you, so the idea would be to go through the presentation. I think we'll go through all the slides and then you can take public comments if you want, and then we can go back through the slides and go through each one of the items. If you looked at the staff report, they're sort of presented in six questions for you to answer so that we can incorporate your input into the general plan, local coastal program, and zoning code update that Commissioner Reiser had mentioned. So with that, I think I'll hop right into it. So some of the background to this effort, back in July of 2017, the city council authorized both the Harbor Advisory Board and the Planning Commission to work together on the effort to better define Measure D and the working waterfront. The both the Planning Commission and Harbor Advisory Board subsequently formed subcommittees of two members each, and those subcommittees met on September 8th and January 11th to develop material related to the designated effort. Moving into late February of 2018, staff took that input and provided summary documentation of that that was presented to both the Harbor Advisory Board and Planning Commission. Harbor Advisory Board on March 1st and Planning Commission on March 6th of this year. And then we took that additional input and put together the presentation in staff report materials this evening. Now we'll move out of background and go into the items that we're going to ask you to weigh in on this evening. First is related to the working waterfront mission statement. The question there is, is the draft working waterfront mission statement acceptable? And where would we like to insert it into the GPLCP zoning code update? It is our recommendation on the staff side that you potentially look at putting portions of it, putting it in Chapter 1704, the draft, Chapter 1704 of the zoning code. That is in your packet as attachments. Sorry about that. Attachment four to the staff report. Or the other option would be to put it in the general plan, land use plan, as a more generalized statement heading for the waterfront. This is the working waterfront mission statement. I'm not going to read it out, but if there's questions about it, certainly we can, we can read through it later on in the deliberation process. Second question we're asking for is, are these the appropriate working waterfront sectors? We have three of them. We have the fisheries sector, which is comprised of the Measure D area and runs from Target Rock to Beach Street. We have the visitor sector, which is sort of in the middle, and that's Beach Street south to the public boat launch ramp. And then the southern sector, which runs from the public boat lodge ramp down to the State Park Marina. The intent here would be that this section be included in the general plan, LCP land use plan, and not in zoning because we have separate zoning classifications that run the length of this planning area that are comprised of waterfronts and open space and ESHA and commercial visitor serving and residential and harbor. So it would run afoul of that if we were not to place it in the higher, in the hierarchy of the general plan as opposed to the zoning code, and we can speak more to that later if you have questions. I think here we're looking, we're talking about working waterfront and the land uses. And the land uses that would be included in the, as part of the allowed uses in this area would be tourism, boating, commercial fishing, recreational fishing, mariculture, charter boat operations, boat repair and maintenance, boat building, marine supply services, marine construction, marine industry support services, seafood processing, seafood sales, aquariums, transportation, shipping, military activities, coastal dependent energy production, boat marinas, boat moorage, boat dockage, orphanage, boat launching, and other water-dependent Planning Commission, when they reviewed this in March, had some questions about what was the intent of where to place those uses, sort of in line with the comment that I had on the previous item. We do have zoning classifications that run the entire length of this. So we would want the Planning Commission and Harbor Advisory Board this evening to weigh in on where you want to put those uses. Is it acceptable to put it in the land use plan? That's sort of the upper, that's the top tier of our land use documents, and it would sort of say, hey, these are the things we want in this area, and then they get defined more specifically by zoning classification or district through the zoning code. So we should talk more about that as the evening rolls on. Item four is, as it relates to Measure D, is what does the phrase primarily for the purposes of mean? And do the HAB and the Planning Commission endorse the concept as put forth by the subcommittee that primarily for the purposes of means directly related to? Commercial fishing is the highest and best use, and it does not mean that a majority percentage of fishing related, or something unrelated to commercial fishing with the intention to subsidize commercial and recreational fishing? Again, another term, item five, is what is clearly incidental there to mean? And does the Plan, the Planning Commission and Harbor Advisory Board endorse the concept developed by the subcommittee that that phrase means as it relates to Measure D means something fishermen need or is directly supportive to or of them? Last item is, what does non-commercial recreational fishing activities mean? Again, this is the concept put forward by the subcommittee. And does this mean, like, is it acceptable for mom-and-pop type operations or citizen recreational fishing activities? And then not commercial sport fishing for hire operations? And that a private recreational fishing vessel would have to be involved and would have to include certain defined items, as evidenced by, say, rod holders, rods, various gear and tackle related to fishing? Owner would have to maintain a fishing license, and that vessel would have to be used on occasion, you know, to go out and go fishing. Not a high bar to meet, really. I think with that, we get to the end of the presentation. Again, it's fairly short, and the idea is to obtain the input from you this evening. Eric and I will take it back after that and work it into finalized language that we'll present in a draft format to the General Plan Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, and City Council in either the general plan and local coastal program or in the zoning code. So if you'd like, we can also, I didn't mention this before, we can take questions. If you have questions of us first, it's kind of up to the chairs of how you want to run it, or you can just go directly into public comment and then go into, you know, discussion. It's up to you.
Okay, I think we'll go into public comment. And then we can bring questions to staff after that. So at this time, I'll open up for public comment. You'll have three minutes, so.
Eric's timing.
Please state your name.
My name is Rigmore, and Bill let me go ahead because it's my birthday today.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Anyway, I don't, I'm not very good at siphon all the verbiage and all this stuff. I am just a little bit afraid of calling an area fisheries because I worry about fishermen. Sometimes they think they own the place, and I'm looking at their chairman here. They got a genius as a chairman, and that worries me even more. And the thing is, there is, you know, I think it's wonderful to have the fishermen down there, and I think that's what the Measure D wanted. But there's an area from Beach Street up to Gaffco that now is free and open. We can walk, we can look at the otters. It's a beautiful area, and they may think that Morro Bay is all a little fishing village, but it's tourists that keeps us going. Then you have the place from the outtake building past Mother's Beach, which is a beautiful little beach for mothers to take their little children and hang out, and then all the way out to the rock. What are they going to be doing there in the future? I don't think anything is going to happen in my lifetime because I don't think Eric's, Eric Endersby's, he, you know, keeps track of the place. And I think the fishermen now are fine, but, you know, we're thinking about the future. We don't know who's going to be on the planning commissions. We don't know who's going to be on the city councils. We don't know who's going to be on the harbor thing. So maybe it's too late, nothing can be done because of Measure D. I just, if there is anything, if there, you can have open space or say, say they can't do this or that in those areas, I think that would be a good thing. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Good afternoon. Bill Martini. I'll just, mainly I'm going to be discussing south of the boat launch, but just to follow up on Rigmore, I know I talked to the Planning Commission the other night. And in the Measure D area, the intake of PG&E and also the land between Gaffco and also the old Den Duke property are not in Measure D. So as far as the northern end, because there were talk about support vessels needed for, you know, the windmills and that, or the offshore, that area is exempt from Measure D because Measure D just covers state lands and that's private property. So if you read the ordinance, those three properties are not actually covered under Measure D at the northern end, just to let you know you have options up there. And I wasn't sure when I was reading the staff report, south of the boat launch, if you're strictly talking about the water lease sites or if you're talking water and land. The land south of the boat launch is under special planning area, mixed-use area B. And I'm not, I just wasn't sure if that's going to stay in place or if you're getting rid of that and putting something else on the books. I haven't really heard because that pretty well covers, you know, the intent of that area. And I just, for the Harbor Advisory and the people at home, I just wanted to let people know, just a brief history. The 20 lot subdivision that is south of the boat launch was divided in the 1920s, and it was zoned R2. And back in the 60s, it was rezoned, I think it was Agnes Lee that had it rezoned industrial because they built the cannery and that there. In the early 80s, that property was, along there was zoned residential R1 above the bluff. Below the bluff is zone commercial, you know, harbor commercial or waterfront commercial. That strip of land has been built over the years. I counted, there's approximately 10 residences in that commercial zone, and there's one commercial operation, the boatyard, right at this point. So it's virtually, and above the bluff, there's about, in total, there's about 26 homes in that area. So it's, it's switched from residential to commercial, and then when the commercial kind of died out with the cannery and all that and the fishing industry down there, it's predominantly residential now. Below the bluff, I measured from the bulkhead to the toe of the bluff, which I heard that's the waterfront commercial. It's only 35 foot. There's really, when you deal with 10-foot setback, 5-foot setback, there's really no land down there when it comes to working waterfront. If it's strictly in the bay itself, I understand that. The original area states that in that Measure B area is recreational fishing and boating, and that the commercial fishing was designed to go into the northern end, into Measure D. In fact, the tugs.
Bill, that's your time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was that it?
I think that was it.
No problem.
I thought he was getting a phone call.
Yeah, I didn't. Yeah, okay. I'll fill in later then.
Thanks, Bill. Next, please.
Yes, Gene Doughty, 201 Main Street, formerly chairman for the Hat Out Committee on the Working Waterfront. I recluse myself, and now I'm speaking as a public member. And Bill was right about Measure D not addressing the Den Duke property, the intake building in the area between Gaffco and Harbor Hut, but it would fall underneath the working waterfront category in that, the first section up there, which would allow coastal dependent energy uses. The other point I'd like to put out on, in the Measure D category, can the clause non-conforming use be modified to allow historical uses? Example would be the old crab cooker or now Dockside or Three structure, the building looks like a boat. I think that's a great icon of Morro Bay, shows some of the character of Morro Bay. And as we all know, that building will go away when they widen the road through there to meet the traffic standards for larger trucks. And once that is gone, it is, then becomes a non-existing, a non-conforming use, and it will be a while before it can be replaced again. And I'd like to see that, that use or that icon be allowed back in. Maybe if Dockside or Two wants to put a boat on one side of it, I think that's a great use. It's a good icon for Morro Bay, and I hate to lose that. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Last call. Okay, seeing none. We'll close public comment. Scott, do you, and Eric, do you have any answers or?
Oh, actually, I was going to, thank you. I was going to request that, that either one of you address the lady's comment specifically as it relates to the area between Beach Street and Gaffco. The public may not understand the size or the non, the existence or non-existence and the size of a given lease site. Some of the, some of it is pretty, pretty tiny.
So as far as the Measure D go area goes, between Gaffco and Harbor Hut is private property. There's the future intake building built there, but the power plant that never got done because the power plant didn't expand as it was going to. Power plant intake building itself and the parking lot behind it is public property, not subject to Measure D. Bill's correct. It's leases that are subject to Measure D, and there's a tiny few little slivers of private property in the Coleman Beach area that wouldn't be subject to it. Otherwise, lease site wise, the slips, hour slips between Stacks Wine Bar and South Deep Pier fill up what water lease space there is there. There's really no land lease area in that zone. It's water-only lease because the top of the revetment is the, the turnoff point between land and water lease, and between there and the South Deep Pier, there's no space for land lease. And then you've got Gaffco, which is the lease site, and then in between Gaffco and Harbor Hut, private property, power plant, and then Harbor Hut, lease site. And they don't go back terribly far, as you can see by their buildings. Their buildings basically go to the lease site edges, so it is quite limited how much space is in those leased areas.
Okay. Eric, I mean, Scott, this is probably better for you. There was a question on whether the, we were going to be changing the zoning or keeping the existing zoning and the land.
The zoning classifications are going to change, and you, and you see portion of that in the draft language from that section of the zoning code in, in Chapter Four. But the policies aren't necessarily changing. They're, they're remaining the same. They're, they're written essentially as they are now. There's some tweaking to provide some clarification there, but we're not proposing any wholesale changes. Mr. Martini's correct. I mean, there's, the strip that's commercial is thin, you know, and it goes from the edge of where the, the land is there to the base of the bluff and then changes zoning and goes into residential above that. And all of us, all those properties along that stretch, as you go from the base of the bluff up, you know, have residential uses on them, and it wouldn't make a lot of sense to change any of that to anything other than what they are. You'd be making them non-conforming, so that's, that's not the intent. I would also pick up on the comment that Rigmore made about, related to her concern about, you know, maintaining the ability to walk along that area of the waterfront that Eric described. And our lateral access policies, and I was working on them yesterday, taking input from our General Plan Advisory Committee meeting last week, and is, will require lateral access across, along that whole entire area. So you're, you'll be required, you'd be required, if there were lease sites or any of the, there's a couple that aren't developed along there that are toward the piers, I guess. If they were to develop, they'd be required to have lateral access as well, so that access component would remain. That's a large component of the Coastal Act, and that's a large component of the city's local coastal program is the access component. And so that, those, those items would remain, as much as they are now as far as access goes.
Okay, and then there was a question about the, what I referred to as Thai boat, or what was the, you know, the.
Historic uses.
Historic use on that and non-conforming use. That, I know that that square footage was incorporated in another building, so what?
Yeah, that, that building is proposed, not proposed, is approved for demolition in this, in the restaurant use that is in there is going into the new building that Bob Fowler is going to be building in the area where, yeah, Morro Bay landing is, yeah, I tripped blank there for a second. So, yeah, that'll be going in there.
Could you, could you take a minute to explain how we handle non-conforming uses in that area? That's been a touchy proposition.
So non-conforming uses, we have a non-conforming use policy. So the Measure D language refers to non-conforming uses and allows them to remain. And the cities, when it refers to non-conforming, and since it didn't define it in any other way in the measure, we have to default to what our non-conforming ordinance says. And it, it also allows for non-conforming uses in buildings to remain and gives minimal ability to expand them. And so you're allowed to keep those types of things as long as you don't discontinue the use for more than six months. So that's basically how it's written. So, and there's no proposed, there's not, there's no proposed change to the non-conforming ordinance at this point as we move forward in the zoning code update either.
So is it correct to say then that as it relates to Mr. Doughty's point, that provided a existing non-conforming use does not allow its use to lap for more than six months, it can continue as it wa, as it did, but if they wait, as it currently stands, if they wait longer than six months, then they may not be able to continue?
Correct.
So if citizens had a vital concern about that issue, would it be appropriate then to address the city about the six-month timeline?
Yes, that would be appropriate, yeah.
Okay. Is there any other questions that you thought needed to be answered from public comment?
Thanks.
Can I have your attention, please? Regarding your microphones, they need to be switched on when you want to talk. They are not switched on right now, so be sure to switch them towards you when you...
At this point, I guess we'll take, we'll start discussion on individual items.
Item one's up.
Item one's up. Okay, so we have the working waterfront mission statement. Ron, do you want to pull your?
Sure.
Your board?
And that, that's exactly what we'll do. We've discussed this in the past, and what I'd like to do is to see a motion expressed by somebody for us to re-ratify, I guess, or just for the purposes of this meeting to ratify that, that mission statement, that working waterfront mission statement, as far as the Harbor Advisory Board is concerned. It's there if you want to see it.
I'd like to make the motion that we.
Mike.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we ratified the working waterfront mission statement as previously written by the Harbor Advisory Board.
I would like to second that. Okay. At this, so, so Scott, give me a point of order on this.
Yeah.
Do they ratify it, and then as Planning Commission, do we have our input on it, or do we do it as a joint, a joint board?
You would each make your recommendations on your own.
Okay.
I mean, you can do it this way, you can give us general comment, and then you can trust us to take where you want to go. If you want to be specific so that we're getting what you want, then it's good to do it this way so that there's no, there's no lack of clarity into what you're asking us to do. So it's kind of up to you. This is, when it's like this, hey, the wording's there, do you like it? And if everybody goes yes, then we're good. If there's, if there's concerns about it or questions about it, you should probably have some commentary about it. Obviously, the HAB put it forward and reviewed it a couple of times, so the way they're going about it makes a lot of sense to me. So I'm fine with that, but it is kind of up to the individual board on how you want to deal with it.
We might address subsequent items a little differently.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there, is there, is there a second?
Fine, second.
A second, okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none from the Harbor Advisory Board, all in favor? All opposed? None? Carries.
Okay. Planning Commission, we're up. What is our, what are your comments or feelings on, on the mission statement? Jesse?
I have no comments. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the wording of the working waterfront mission statement as it exists.
Yeah, no, I, I'm fine with the statement. I really have no contributing comments. I'm ready to. Richard?
No comment.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that, second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think we're unanimous on that then.
Okay. Moving on to item two. This deals with the working waterfront sectors. Again, the three, three sectors, and noting that Sector 3 was the one that we, that was revised from the, the commercial sector to the southern sector. I'd also note that from the Planning Commission standpoint, that that was not a unanimous idea that came forward out of the Planning Commission. I think Commissioner Sadowski did not favor that, so putting that out there in case there's some additional suggestions, at least the Planning Commission might want to have on this. So leave it to you.
Okay. I think we'll go ahead and start on this one. What are, Jesse, do you have any feelings on, on the three sectors?
I, I still have some, I would like to hear some input from, from everybody else, but I still, I do have some concerns about the, the naming of the southern sector or, or the renaming of the southern sector as it happens, so I would like to hear from everybody else, though.
Do you have a suggestion, do you have a suggestion on the naming?
Not, not at this moment. I'd like to hear from everybody else.
Okay, Joe. With respect to the southern sector, I, I like the optics of calling it the southern sector, and, you know, I'm particularly aware of trying to alleviate some of the anxiety of the people who live in that area, and I, and I think calling it the southern sector is, is a good step. It requires some other steps, but I think that's good stuff.
Hey, Richard?
Yeah, I, the problem I have with, with calling it the southern sector, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't flow when it is compared to the other, other sectors. You've got a fishing sector, you've got a visitor sector, but a southern sector is location-orientated. And I think that a little more, it would, it would help if we had some clarity. I think I mentioned maybe calling it commercial or residential mix-use slash recreational or something like that. I'd be open to hearing some maybe other suggestions, but I, I think that there is a inconsistency with that, the way that lang- with that, the way that language is set up right there.
Okay, I think where we get hung up on that is we have mixed uses in those, in that area. So, if we call it something specifically, we're going to, that's, that's going to cloud the image of what, of what's, what's there. So, I am happy with the southern sector. I think it's nebulous enough, you know. But unless, do you have any specific wording?
Maybe I can help. So, so you're, I understand where Commissioner Sadowski's coming from, because you look down there, it's like it's a mixed bag, because it is, right? There are six zoning classifications that, that stretch the length of that, and those only be classifications are, our districts are waterfront, R2, which is medium-density residential, it's the condo development, Bayshore. There's CVS for the, for the, in Morro Bay. There's ESHF for the rookery. There's harbor, which is harbor facilities, and then there's another open space that covers the state parks, and even a third type of open space there as well. So, it's all of those things. And so when you call it commercial, well, it's not mostly commercial, it's mostly other things. So, I can see why the southern was attractive, because that's on the south side. I mean, you could, I mean, one option, I guess you could call it mixed use or something like that. I mean, I don't know, it's kind of depends on what you, what you like, but it's, it's calling it one specific thing like we refer to the other things like it's commercial, but it's not commercial. It's not a majority of any.
And I'd like to add a little bit more and build a little bit on Mr. Martin's comments. You know, years ago, it was a lot more, the commercial tagline that, that you see up on the screen there, that we initially had when we were doing the sector naming, those names came basically from our lease management policy for managing our title and leases, and we always, I always refer to that zone as the water lease-only area, because we don't own the land, we only own the water. And it had a lot more commercial activity. We had the fish processing and a lot of commercial fishing and, and processing activity, had a boatyard that had more activity, the, the slips at the south end that used to have a fuel dock, it used to be owned by Fish Co-op, and even before that, Union Oil. So, it was a lot of commercial activity down there. And then, as Mr. Martin said, it's kind of morphed over the years, there's, and now there's little bits and pieces of everything, so, I mean, I'm, I'm not the zoning naming expert guy, but it's, it seems like we're going to have to have something generic to sort of fit everything that's zoned down there.
You know, I don't know if we can really run a beauty contest for a naming, naming here, but does anybody else have any other suggestions from the Harvard Advisory Board other than southern section?
We generated the southern, the southern sector concept, and we were unanimous when we did it at the end of our discussion. However, if, I don't personally, I'm not speaking for the board, personally, I don't see why it's necessary, but I could live with mixed use sector if, if that, if that helps unanimity.
If I may, I would, I would, I would support the mixed use designation. I think that makes more sense. It kind of gives, gives more clarity to what we're actually doing down there, so.
So, another point to take a look at as I'm thinking through this, this a little bit on the fly, but, so, yeah, the fishery sector, I think most people know where that's at. I think the visitor's sector, most people know where that's at. If you call it southern sector, most people will know where that's at. If you call it mixed use, they're not going to have any idea where it's at. I don't know if that makes you change your mind, it's just an, an observation based on the way the naming goes.
Yeah, and include the state park marine as well, you're going, so you got a bunch of slips down there, too.
Right, right. Okay.
Jeff? The, the challenge with calling it mixed use, you know, maybe, I, I think our intent, for the most part, is to try and prevent any additional erosion of some sort of water or fishing activities in the area. And, you know, I worry that mixed use may be leaning in the opposite direction and creating an impression that perhaps it's not, we're not so adamant about preserving fishing and mixed, and fishing and, and water uses. And, and, you know, southern is a nice little ambiguous compromise, if you will, which doesn't really telegraph what this sector is all about, and you have to then go to the next section, the land, the uses in that particular sector.
Well, these sectors are being proposed to define the areas within, at this point, notional, hopefully will not be notional when we're done with all this and the updates are done, a working waterfront. That's not restricted, the, the concept of working waterfront is not restricted to fisheries. If you remember the laundry list that you folks had a little trouble with when we first proposed it to you, that Mr. Graham read off, I just, it's just a point of clarification. So, the, the southern portion of the proposed working water, Morro Bay working waterfront area is not restricted just to fisheries activities?
No. Okay, well, I think we need to either come up with a name or agree to the southern sector.
Joe, you bring up a good point with the mixed use nomenclature, and I, I didn't look at it from that perspective, and based on that, I, and I think that Commissioner, Board Member Reasoner also brought up a good point. I, I'm not passionate to hold off on, on that southern sector. If you guys are comfortable with it, I'll be all right with it.
Okay, so do we have an agreement on, that we can live with the southern sector? Okay, do we need a motion on that?
Sounds like you're all in favor, and so I'm fine with that. If you want to do the motion, I think you can. I think we have a majority in that direction.
I think we have a great, clear, clear direction on that then. Okay. Nobody loves it, but we'll live with it.
You love it? We love it.
Okay. Okay, then we got the-
You got all the waterfront uses?
Three.
Yeah, number three, item number three. So, this is the list of waterfront uses, land, the, so we're talking about tourism, boating, commercial fishing, recreational fishing, mariculture, charter boat operations, boat repair, maintenance, boat building, marine supply services, marine construction, marine industry support services, seafood processing, seafood sales, aquariums, transportation, shipping, military activities, coastal-dependent energy production or support might be included in that, boat marinas, boat moorage, boat dockage, wharfage, boat launch, wharfage, boat launching, and other water-dependent uses.
If I might make just a comment about the, why the HAB developed this laundry list, which at one time was actually longer. When we got to a certain stage in our work on developing, as directed by council, a working waterfront initiative for Morro Bay, we came to understand, or we already understood, that if it actually came to fruition, that there would be zoning involved at some point. I mean, land use regulations would become involved. And we wanted to make sure that those who follow on, for instance, the planning commission followed on, had the advantage of our thinking about this cornucopia of uses, so that it did not become restrictive in some way, or less general in terms of water, of working waterfront-related activities. So, that's really our message. If there's a different way to handle this, so that whatever land use, land use regulation comes out of this is, is broad enough, that you folks, who are the experts, we're not, is broad enough to, to not be restrictive, then we're, we're open to that.
Scott, it seems like we'll have, you know, on the land use side, especially on the land zoning, that we'll have specific uses that will state what's allowed and what's, what's permitted with conditional use permits and what's not permitted in each of those zones, correct?
It's a very good point, and I brought the, the second slide as it relates to this item, because there was some concern at the planning commission meeting on the, on March 6th, voiced, and there's different ways you can look at it. I did include, and you know, it's a, it's a sneak peek, because it hasn't been released to the public yet, but now it has. It's the draft, it's the draft zoning section for the waterfront harbor district, area districts. And so that's in your staff report as attachment four, and it talks about all the uses, and it has permitted uses, conditionally permitted uses, you know, in, in those various, in the, in the harbor district areas, in the, in the waterfront areas. And so you could look through that and see if, you know, that's representative of, you know, the overall list here. What I would propose, because it's a broad list, and when you want to implement broad concepts, you put those in the land use document. So, we could have the, the mission statement in there, and we could have, even, even have the sectors in the land use, with these uses put underneath it. And then how we would implement that, and the implementing section would be, we would push it through zoning into this, and there's, there's a couple of other sections that would have to be put into, too, but this is the, at least the waterfront district, wanted to give you an example of what it, what it would look like if we pushed it out through zoning. And it has the, and this will actually have a table that goes with it when we're done with it. It's, again, this is one of the administrative drafts we're working on, and so it's not complete, but I thought you could at least see, the lists are in here, and then these lists are going to actually turn into tables that you look at for the different zoning districts.
Okay.
So, that's, that's kind of where we were, we were going with that, and that's the options, and how that would look if we just took this and put this as the overarching guidance for the working waterfront concept. It would be, this is the concept, this is what we want to allow, what we want to do, and then to make it happen, we take those different zoning districts, and we plug those uses into them where they're appropriate, and that's how it would look, so.
Okay. So, let me-
Questions or comments?
Let me paraphrase that then. So, essentially, we're going to get the, we're going to get the 30,000-foot view in the land use, in the, in the land use document, the statement on the front side, on the, basically the front of the document, and then as we go into the individual zones and we, we drill down into, you know, tree top height, we'll be getting the specific land uses for those specific properties that are zoned specifically.
Yeah, so we have, the land use also comes with a map, you know, the, this is, I have the current zoning map here. You know, that's typically what you look, see zoning, it's got all the different colors on it, right, and they represent land use districts. Our land use map does that, too. It, it, it sort of looks very similar to this. And then, but they're usually broader, and there's fewer categories in it, and then it gets more specific when you get on the ground, and then we would, so if you had the larger in the general plan, which is the general plan local coastal program, which is the top-tier land use document for the city, you have that on top, and then that's what we push it through, the smaller zoning districts, again, that's how it would look. But the question, though, is, are you comfortable with that? Is that the intent behind what, what you put forward? And if it is, then we're good. If it's not, then let's have a conversation and be more specific about it, and we can look at the zoning classifications and where you think they belong and where you don't think they belong, and we can have that conversation. So, I'll leave it to the, the boards to decide.
Okay. My, my thoughts on it and my concerns, I think this is what we've, we've been trying to push for, is that what we're trying to do is we're trying to protect the commercial activities that are there, that are consistent to remain there, and then also future activities that support the harbor. The biggest problem I see in working waterfronts and in harbor, harbor residential interfaces is that the, it's always going to be more economically preferable to change to a residential use, because the, the results are immediate, and, but once they're, once that, once that area is changed over to residential, they have a lot more power and crowd out everything else. And it's hard to, it's hard to go back and recreate boatyards in a residential area or support facilities for future, you know, offshore energy production or something. You know, a case in point, and I'm going to pontificate here for just a second, is Alameda, up in the Bay Area. There were 13 boat-building facilities and repair facilities that were on Alameda Island. The last one just closed about three or four months ago, and it's, it's now going to be a condo unit. So, I think this is what we're trying to do is, you know, or what I would like to see the intent of this document and these, this joint board do is to, is to somehow protect those uses for future use when they're viable. So, so, whatever, whichever we go on this, that's the direction I want this, you know, our wording to go, and I think, I think we're okay with running this in the, in the, in the zoning, the overall statement in the zoning, and then have specific, specific uses for the specific, the, excuse me, in the land use, having the statement in the land use, and then having specific uses for the individual zones and classifications of the zones.
I mean, we would, we would pull forward several of them, the, my, my point in doing that, and this is probably will make it a little clearer to you, is as I had mentioned before, there are several different zoning classifications that, that those uses don't address, that are in the area, right? There's residential uses, we wasn't talking about residential uses, so I can't put that, I can't put all those uses in the R2 zone that fronts on the water. I can't put it in the CBS, I know some of it might work, but I can't put it all in the CVS zone, that's commercial visitor serving, wouldn't make sense. Or in the open space area, or in the ESH area, that's habitat preservation. So, I couldn't put all of those things in each one of those zoning districts. But I can put it in the, I can put most of them in the waterfronts, and I can put most of them in the harbor area, and in that, in that type of, in those type of classifications, so it makes complete sense there. And so I would be taking those and those zoning classifications and taking those uses, and where they're not currently in the zoning, I would be taking them out and putting each one of them into the appropriate zoning district. It's just, like I said, I, I can't, if you gave me the directive to do it, I couldn't put them in all, I couldn't put them in all of those zones, because those, those don't work in, you know, they don't all work in residential, doesn't, you don't have both, so, or really in the visitor serving or ESH, that type of thing, so. That's why I was thinking, it's good to tell the story about what we want to do for working waterfront, and then the zoning can, we can, whatever's not in the zoning right now for those areas, we can put those things in so it works.
We've spent a lot, the Harvard Advisory Board spent a lot of time thinking about this. We provided the planning commission with copies of our memos and the city council and staff, so you know what our thinking is. Our thinking is just exactly what you said, Mr. Lor, once it's gone, it's gone. That's why in our documentation, we came up with, we provided the examples of the only two at that time states which had enacted state law relative to working waterfronts, and that was Maine and Florida. Maine did it to protect its, its working, literally its working waterfronts, very heavily concentrated on commercial fisheries and supporting activities in their particular case, because it, because it was under fire from development, and it was going, and it was going away because of the economic drivers. State of Florida did exactly the opposite thing. They decided that the working waterfront was tourism and residential, and that's created, I mean, I work, I've spent a lot of time working there on the coast of California, sorry, coast of Florida, and there are, I can't tell you how many boatyards and marine support activities and industry things, marine industry-related things are gone. People are having to go a long ways to get those services these days, and we just, we felt really strongly, we didn't want to see that happen in Morro Bay. So, if preservation is part of the plan, I think we're good.
Okay, good. That's, that's, and this isn't, this isn't your only bite at the apple, right? I mean, once we develop the policy, it has to go through general plan advisory committee, planning commission, the city council, and so you'll get to see what the finalized policies and, obviously, once we do put them together, we will give them to you so you can look at them, because we don't want to do it incorrectly, and we don't want to mischaracterize the intent of either board when we move stuff forward.
Do you, any, any comments here?
I agree entirely with, with the notion and issue of preservation of the, of the waterfront, the commercial activities there. As a, but as a layperson, because I don't really know much about commercial, in fact, I don't know anything about commercial fishing, does that area currently lend itself to things like seafood processing, boat building? I mean, I guess the question is, would it be possible for some enterprise to come in and say, I'd like to set up a cannery in that area and actually be able physically to do it?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
There's a building there that's colloquially called the cannery.
Yeah.
Right, that is no, no longer operates as a cannery. Right. So, there are, there are spaces and the like, and the logistics of that sort of thing. Because the reason I ask is because to this, to the citizens of that area, uninformed as they might be about this discussion, frankly, you know, the notion of some government board saying that they're encouraging a cannery to be, you know, come in next to my home is really sort of disconcerting. So, what would- So what would be the mechanism for citizen input, should an enterprise decide, I'd like to put a cannery in that southern sector?
So most of those things, anything on the waterfront, our permitting process is not, it's not simple. Typically, it would require a conditional use permit. If there was improvements that would be made associated with it, as it stands right now, it requires a coastal development permit that's issued by the coastal commission, and a conditional use permit that's issued by the city. There are no less than one, two, three, it'll be noticed in three public hearings on the city side, and then a public hearing at the coastal commission side for the CDP. Fortunately, for those who have, you know, landside property along these areas or hold leases in these areas, the updated general plan and LCP is going to transfer permitting authority on the land side that the coastal commission currently holds to the city. They're kind of, I think, tired of doing it, because it's a lot of work for them, and they'd rather have us do it, just have appeal authority there and be done with it. So that'll be a little bit easier, and it'll be one less hearing you have to have, you don't have to go to coastal commission. But it's a long process, and it's a, it's a public process, because you have to get a use permit to do it, or a coastal development permit. And moving into the new code, you'll have to get both. So, that goes to the planning commission, and depending on how we write it, it could go to city council as well, the lease side area, they, to this point, wanted to weigh in on that, and I would imagine that probably is going to remain, so we'll probably at least have two hearings, planning commission for recommendation to city council, and then city council will make the final decision.
And then, of course, and those hearings would examine things like the obnoxious consequences, smell, noise, operations.
You're required to look at that from the California Environmental Quality Act side of things, and there are environmental factors that weigh in.
Joe, there's also, I think, a significant, there are significant considerations on, in terms of utilizing those properties for those kinds of activities on a practical side. The development would be extremely expensive. I'm just taking as an example the fisheries concept in a cannery. First of all, there aren't the fisheries in our area to support a cannery, period. And we have a professional fisherman on our board bench, I'm sure would be able to second that notion, and it doesn't look like there would be anytime soon. There are marine sanctuaries all over the west coast of California, and marine protected areas all over the coast of California, that make it extremely unlikely that there would ever be enough product gathered within landing distance of a process, let's just call it seafood processing instead of a cannery. Seafood processing place in Morro Bay. And, but the development cost would be very high. I just don't think it's economically feasible. I don't see it happening, not in my lifetime.
But we're on.
Just as an example.
That was, that was my thinking, and so then I asked myself, well, if that is the likelihood, then why are we creating this anxiety on the part of a certain segment of the population, if in fact, those kind of activities can never occur? But I'm persuaded that, rather than trying to dice this into those kinds of activities that would be permitted in the southern sector as opposed to some of the other sectors, I'm persuaded that you can identify land uses for the whole thing, and then allow, you know, the due process and the hearing and practicalities, as you mentioned.
Yeah, you know, also, we're not, we can't say what the future's going to bring, and that's where I'm trying to look forward to, look forward, be forward-looking for, you know, items, there may not be wild fisheries, but there may be mariculture capabilities that, that we just might be the right perfect spot for, for something that's, that's in the future. And if we, if we maintain the ability of those uses to be there, that they may be perfectly compatible, and they're definitely going to have to go through the whole planning process.
Yeah.
And the whole public comment process, and the SEQA, and all of that to make it work. So the hurdles are high, but I don't want to preclude that for.
And I would, I would agree, just the possibility of a terminus for logistics to get the equipment for wind-generated electricity, that alone, I think, would be a sufficient reason, is sort of, for no other reason, just to preserve the potential of this area.
Yeah.
So.
Another comment?
No, I just wanted to, I'm sorry.
I did notice a couple of comments made by members of the planning board, and one of them indicated the size of the fisheries and the condition, if you will, of the fisheries currently in Morro Bay. And Joe had mentioned that you didn't know that much about. So what I did is, I have something I'd like to give you, particularly because where there's, this involves finances, it involves Measure D, involves issues about the commercial fishing industry, particularly in the north section. And this is our sixth printing of an economic impact report. And this just came out in January. It's always a year behind, as that's how the data becomes available. But this archives back to 20 years, and I think you'll find it very helpful in delivering or learning, if you will, about what goes down, what goes on down the waterfront, if you don't mind.
And with the exception, just to be clear, in the southern section, with the exception of moorage, commercial fishing boat moorage, none of the activities that are embedded in and drive that report take place in the southern section.
Did you give one? I got one.
May I say something?
Yeah.
If I can make a comment. I'm with Joe. I'm no fisherman, I know, know nothing about harbors, and, you know, it seems prudent to me to take the advice of the harbor advisory board, you guys are advising on the harbor, you guys are the experts, and I want to, I want to express my gratitude for you doing what you do, and I'm going to take your advice, and that's the way I would lean, so.
You know, I, when I look at, I understand how you want to have a catch-all here, and one of the things that kind of jumped out at me was the coastal dependent energy production. Operationally, that could, that could mean wind generation, that could mean oil exploration as well. And what I'm understanding, from what you were saying, Scott, is that we can leave this open here, however, once it, any infrastructure that's land-based, we catch it at the planning commission, is, am I correct with that?
Yes, and even more specifically about the issue that you raised, we have specific prohibitions in our ordinance that prohibit us from supporting offshore oil facilities. I mean, you can't have support facilities, we can't have service boats in, you know, places that are operating out of here, we can't do any of those things.
Okay.
We can't support, based on how the ordinance is written now, offshore oil drilling, period. So you don't need to worry about that, because there's a second ordinance that deals specifically with that. So this is general enough, and it's fine, and it doesn't give me any heartburn about where we're at. I actually was having a conversation with coastal staff yesterday, and they had struck the energy component, you know, discussion out of the allowed use section. I said, well, why did you do that? And it was for the, kind of for the reasons you talked about, and I was like, well, this is just, this is for wind energy only. I mean, I'll be specific if you want, I'll just tell you what it's for, so we don't preclude it, because otherwise, if they go back and amend the ordinance later. And he's like, well, that's not, he's like, well, that's not coastal dependent. And I was like, offshore wind farms? And, you know, and I mean, I was laughing, it was a little tongue-in-cheek, I know what he was saying, because you can have wind farms on land, and yeah, I understand that. But, you know, it really does need to be there, and, you know, because that's where they identified where the wind is, and it would be adequate, and, you know, whether they can make it happen or not, who knows? But we don't want to preclude that, and so that's kind of where I was going with it, is it, if we have, well, we have to write it into our ordinance, and we'll write it into the zoning code such that it allows for the things that we've been talking about for a while. Now, whether those come forward or not, who knows? And the permitting process that would go along with those is going to be lengthy, and involved, and convoluted, and all those types of things, but I don't think we have to worry about the oil energy component of things.
Yeah, the other, the other thing that, if memory serves, I go back maybe 10 years or something, there was some talk about LNG offloading and tugboats and supporting that. Do you, that was a kind of a, like, there was a talk about it. Maybe you remember a little bit about that, Eric, or not?
Not LNG.
Not LNG offloading?
Natural gas stuff. Yeah, natural gas.
Yeah, that was, that was a while ago, and it was going, they were, that talk was going up and down the coast of California, looking to.
Yeah. LA for that, LA laws.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, we didn't have the power facilities.
Yeah, well, yeah, there was, somebody was contacted here, so there was kind of like, I remember seeing some documentation, but, okay.
Okay, I think.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I think we're getting a little further feel.
And when they had penciled this, you know, when we penciled this out, coastal plan energy, wind and wave was what was on the mind.
Yeah.
It wasn't, we knew about the already, the prohibitions for oil support facilitating stuff, and the council hadn't adopted its recent resolution yet, but that was, it wasn't for offshore oil by any means, that's what we're thinking.
So I think we're in agreement here that.
I haven't heard anybody say that you don't want to do this.
We like your ideas, Scott.
All right, so I think, I think we're, I think we're good on it, I think we're good on three.
Okay.
Thank you all.
So you want to take four?
Sure. So four, as soon as we push a button and get it up.
That's four? That's four right there?
Oh, that's four, thank you.
Unfortunately, the four is blue, so it's hard to read.
Yeah, got it. I totally got it. So this is, the harbor advisory board has been working for some time on some perceived ambiguities within the, within the language of Measure D, which was approved by the public in a referendum in 19.
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, thank you, I always fail that test. So it's been around a long time. Measure D relates, for those that don't know, is a land use issue that protects fishing-related activities, and there's a little more to it than that, between Beach Street and Target Rock. That's the Measure D area. And as the harbor director said earlier this evening, there are a number of lease sites, this brings us back to the Title and Trust lands, there are a number of lease sites within that space or within that distance. So there is, Measure D talks about commercial fishing and recreational fishing activities. That's really what it was focused on, in simple terms. And designated an area within the city on the waterfront that was dedicated to those uses. And part of the language that's in Measure D, as it was enacted by the people, says, quote, primarily for the purposes of, and then it goes on to talk about commercial fishing and recreational fishing activities. And over the years, that language, the primarily part, has resulted in a variety of uses taking place within the Measure D area. So we struggled, the harbor advisory board struggled with that, then we struggled with the subcommittee from the planning commission with that. And the end result of that is that those two combined subcommittees came up with a recommendation regarding the, what primarily for the purposes of means. I will make a personal comment here, as it states in the staff report, that primarily for the purposes of means directly related to commercial fishing, related to, is that a period? I'm a little confused about the wording. Primarily for purpose of means directly related to, semicolon, commercial fishing is the highest and best use. That sort of confuses me. Semicolon.
Got it. Primarily for the purposes of means directly related to commercial fishing, and then commercial fishing is the highest and best use is a separate concept.
Okay.
And then does not mean.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it means directly related to, means commercial fishing is the highest and best use.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Two separate concepts.
Okay, so that, so just to be clear to the public and to ourselves, when the two ad hoc committees got together, that was not unanimously agreed to. So that's something that we need to work out this evening. That, the concept of commercial fishing being the highest and best use. I personally don't see, I think that that's a complicator, an unnecessary complicator in dealing with the primary for the purposes of. But that's, that's a discussion item, and I don't, we can start at one end and go down the other end, or however you'd like to do it, Jerry.
I thought we, I thought we'd had, highest, commercial fishing is the highest and best use was, was the best terminology that we came up with at the joint meeting, but if your recollection is different, let's talk it out again.
Well, unfortunately, the other member of our ad hoc committee who was there is not with us this evening, and I'm, and I have way less than a perfect memory, I assure you. So why don't we spend just a, just a few minutes, and let me poll my folks, just for a second.
The general thought is that, as far as, is trying to clarify primarily, and stating that the, that, you know, my memory of when, when we, when Measure D was, was being voted on, was that it was primarily for, to support the commercial fishing industry. And therefore, to me, that stated that that was the, that was the highest and best use of sites and locations there, and, and then that, other things would be relegated to that. So highest and best use is a typical term used in planning documents that, that seemed to fit to me, but let's discuss it.
My difficulty with that is that, is that the language in Measure D doesn't seem, that doesn't seem to be the intent. The language is, quote, purposes of serving or facilitating licensed commercial fishing activities, so far so good, or non-commercial recreational activities. So if, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned that we're, that identifying, formalizing highest and best use as commercial fisheries alters not just the wording, but perhaps the intent of Measure D.
I was persuaded by the arguments in favor.
But the language is the language.
Correct. But the arguments were also, you know, pro temp, temporaneous of the time, and that was what was used for, for, you know, as far as background to get the vote for a ye vote on the measure. So the language is the language, essentially, primarily could be litigated in court, but it seemed to me that the highest, that the highest and best use was a good explainer that made it easier to, easier to, for, for somebody looking at Measure D and say, will this fit? Well, then the first thing it fits is, does it support commercial fishing? That's the highest and best use. Maybe the next, the next best use, or the next highest use would be resident, would be non-commercial fishing. So, or the other items that were listed in Measure D. So, but.
Okay, okay, I understood all that, and yes, and yes, that's how you presented it in the last subcommittee meeting. But isn't the, isn't the point of the discussion that came forward to us, and the reason we were discussing it together, about the primarily purposes of ambiguity thing, was that a, on the part of the city, and so part of approved uses within Measure D, that there had been this sort of percentage thing creeping in.
Right.
And that concerns us, that concerns the harbor advisory board as a body, and.
And it concerns us as a planning commission also, we were dealing with that.
So if we focus on that. So if we focus on that, as, as the essential point of primarily for the purposes of, is it still necessary, this is a question, is it still necessary to consider what, what is or is not the highest and best use as it relates to facilitating licensed commercial fishing and/or, or not and/or, or non-commercial recreational activities? Where does that, what does that, where does that get us as it relates to this creeping percentage thing?
I can't, forgive me, I'm a little confused, Ron, but your argument, to me, seems like it would be, "commercial fishing, the highest and best would be something that you would actually want if you're afraid of creep."
I, I do want it, but not at the exclusion of the rest of the, of the language that is protected by Measure D.
See, we're not changing, we're not changing the language of Measure D. The language of Measure D is a primary language that's always going to be the governing state. We're just, you know, my thought was just as a secondary clarification of that language. When somebody goes, well, what does primarily mean? Well, primarily means the highest and best use is commercial fishing, without a, without a percentage attached. Yeah, Dana?
I think that's the problem, though, it will, it could actually become attached, you know, in a way, if someone starts seeing it in print in, in a city document as far as primarily, when it specifically does not, it's, it's even across the board here with these uses of non-commercial recreational and incidental.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I understand, I understand, yeah.
It, it gives you leeway. I mean, obviously, you're going to see the commercial fishing, but I, I just wanted to leave, leave the door open for all uses to be equal, and, and not give a primary use to just one of them.
If I may, I understand what you're saying, and I, and I read the same thing into the zoning code section here that you see. It seems to me if we just got rid of the word "commercial," but fishing is the best, highest and best use, and not differentiate between commercial and non-commercial recreational.
That's a good point.
That's a great point.
Joe?
That's way too simple.
Say that again, Jesse?
Okay, go ahead, Jesse.
Well, what I was saying was, so, it says primarily for the purposes of means directly related to, "commercial fishing is the highest and best use." If we just dump "commercial" and put "fishing" as the highest and best use, it's clearly, it's clearly the intent of the zoning code section that fishing be the primary use. So, I mean, just dumping the word "commercial" seems to fix it all, to me, I don't know.
Well, it might get, you want to be careful, you don't, we don't muddy things up in our intent to do, do a better job. You know, it strikes me that, while I appreciate the phrase "in it best and highest," that's a value judgment, it's a subjective judgment, and, and in this particular area, part of the Measure D provision, we're trying to get really specific and objective. So I think if you, if you want to incorporate a value judgment, this is the highest value. That's to sort of be in the, sort of the introduction to the concept of Measure D when you're introducing it, but when you start talking about things like primary and direct, I, I could imagine somebody, you know, hiring a lawyer and arguing that, well, sometime in the future, it's clearly no longer the highest and best use, even if they could define it, and that, that might even serve to, like, weaken a definite, a definition. I think you should, if, if you want to incorporate value, do it in this section, and if you want to try and get really specific and objective, I think put it in, keep them, keep them separate, I think is the best thing.
Without regard to, to the percentage thing, or to the opportunity for additional ambiguity, much less abuse, to devolve out of, out of a value judgment, I mean, I respect that point, can we, can we achieve what we have been struggling with as it relates to primarily for the purposes of by using one of its definitions, one of the synonyms for primarily, which is directly? Can we get there, does it work for us if we say directly related to licensed commercial fishing activities or non-commercial recreational activities? Does that, is, is, is there enough specificity in the concept of directly?
So would.
Because this, because this stuff comes before you folks, that's where it comes.
So, like, your operational definition of directly to commercial, would that include selling of fish and food? Or would it be just strictly to, you know, offloading and, and, you know, maintenance, you know, the working, you know, like, things directly associated just with commercial fishing? Or is it, how, in other words, what are the parameters of, of what you would call, like, directly to commercial? Because how, how far can it go?
Yeah, this is the problem, we're dancing on the heads of pins here. And, you know, directly can mean one thing one day and another thing the other day. That's why I was trying to come up, that we need to codify, we need, we kind of need to, to make a value judgment, so that the value judgment isn't made somewhere else for, at some other time. So that's why, that's why I thought, and I, Jesse, I like your idea with the, drop the "commercial" and just say "fishing," supporting fishing is the highest and best use. But, you know, that was my attempt at, at bracketing this in, so that it wouldn't be spread out where, you know, selling T-shirts with pictures of fish on them.
Or putting it on picnic tables.
Yeah.
The risk of.
So let me poll my, let me poll the Harvard Advisory Board for a second.
Okay.
Go ahead, Eric.
If the risk of muddying it up hopefully doesn't the next definition, clearly incidental thereto, we went on to say that that's something fishermen need or is directly supportive to or of them, that could be looped back into the primarily for the purposes of, it's directly related to or something fishermen need or is directly supportive of them. I mean, it's always going to be subjective, no matter what, what word you put on it.
Yeah, the directly thing, I mean, yeah, what you just said is, I, I can see the city being approached with all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, Eric, can we get that?
We have the, we have the does not mean section of it, does that not help the whole conversation about what, I mean, because that, that's going to go into the, the discussion about what this means as well, because it's part of, this is, this is definition. You know, we, we have what Measure D says, and then we're trying to explain, like, this is the way we're going to take it to mean it. Other people can disagree with it, but we're trying to put the parameter in place and put it in our document, adopt it, and that's what we're going to use for decision-making processes when it comes to these things. We're not going to say, okay, you fifty-one percent, commercial fishing, and forty-nine percent pancake sales. Nope. Even if that supports the commercial fishing operation and allows it to operate, that's not what we're doing.
Not what fishermen need.
Yeah. So that's, anyway, I don't know if that helps, so just, that was part of the conversation we talked about.
So Harvard Advisory Board, if the word "commercial" was dropped, from what you see up there on the screen, are we okay?
I'm okay.
I'm not.
I'm not.
Okay, that's two nots, and Jean's gone. Oh, we don't have a, we don't have a quorum.
We do.
Four, dude.
Yeah, we have a quorum.
Oh, sorry. There's not eight of us. Oh, thanks. I panicked, I panicked. Needlessly panicked.
Lynn, what's your, what's your objection?
Well, the, part of the objection is that in Measure D, we were to, we were trying to support commercial fishing, so if you remove the word "commercial," you're no longer following what Measure D says.
Well, part of, I think what, what's going on, too, the Measure D also put on the same level recreational fishing.
On the same level?
On the same level.
On the same level.
The word "or."
The word "or."
The word "or" puts it, as far as I'm concerned, right at the same level.
So, the problem was it was really a poorly written.
That's where they wrote it.
Okay.
It's how they wrote it, and it's really poorly written.
Things were simpler back then.
Yes. It was understood, but now it's no longer understood. So what, what objections do you have?
Well, Joe Jean, he was a very good friend, and his, I can promise you, his intent was to preserve the commercial fishing industry. Joe was a commercial fisherman himself, he had a channelery in town, and did a big business with the sport fishing industry, both commercial and recreational sport fishing. The word "commercial" is crucial. If the word "commercial" was not in the Measure D component, we would not be here today. So, what that kind of brings around to, by changing a simple word like that, if it's a mistake, it has the possibility of changing the complexion of the entire town. You know, it, this is what we've got here, we are here, because most or all of us, I don't think I've ever been anywhere where so many people loved the place they lived in, and I don't think we'd want to change the complexion of what we've got.
Okay, so this was about, this was, what got us in this, to, to repeat, what got us into this item, I don't mean just in this meeting, but in prior ad hoc committee meetings, was this percentage business. And I do think that what's up on the screen addresses that. So my suggestion, I guess at this point, is to insert, not delete, "commercial," but insert "commercial," just exactly what Measure D says, "commercial fishing or non-commercial recreational fishing." Put those, put those words in.
As the highest and best use?
As the highest and best use.
Okay. My, my whole focus is on, is trying to.
Exactly.
To bracket it with the highest and best use, so that's, that's what's read as part of the definition, so that we support the, the commercial fishing. And, you know, at this point, the recreational fishing, too, because it was in Measure D as an "or."
It's a way through it.
So, so that was my intent. I'm happy with the wording that you have, Ron. You know, if that, if that seems to, to fit.
Because the real, the real, the real point of, of item four is the last phrase, "does not mean," and so on. That's the real point of it.
Right.
That's where the creep came from. Not having the "does not mean," that's where it came from. Open to interpretation.
Okay, Eric, are you guys, are you guys, you want to poll here?
Yeah, if, if we put, if we put the language, just the entire phrase out of Measure D for both kinds of fishing in there as a, as the highest and best use, are you okay with that or not okay with that? Lynn?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. Jeremiah?
Yes.
Dana?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, Jesse, are you?
I'm okay with that.
Joe, are you comfortable with that?
I am.
Nobody's going to be comfortable with any of this, can you live with it?
Well, you know, I, I'm, I'm thinking about the notion of diluting what was the central driving force of the measure, which was to protect commercial, okay? And, and I realize there's room for recreational sport fishing, but let's not forget that we're, it seems pretty clear from what was on the ballot, Mr. that they intended to exclude commercial sport fishing in that area. So, you know, I'm, I guess, I guess I'm leaning towards that part of it, don't change anything, but.
We're actually using.
What you're adding, you're adding recreational.
No.
No, you're not.
The, the language right out of Measure D, which says, quote, "licensed commercial fishing activities or non-commercial recreational activities."
Okay, all right.
In, in the high, as, as the illustrator of, that's not the right, my English teacher from eighth grade is going to kill me, as the modifier for highest and best use.
Okay, all right, I'll buy that. Richard?
Right out of the measure.
You know, I, I think, Scott, you, you kind of helped me, you know, we, we can, we can put something on a Petri dish and dissect it to the point where it's really confusing. However, when you take it, when you take what's written as a whole, because, you know, we can get tripped up on focusing on something, I think that, you know, I, I talked to my friend, Mark Taglizini, and he knows, what was that gentleman that you referred to, Jeremiah? That older guy that.
Joe Jeanini.
Yeah. He talked about the same thing, he said the same thing you did right there. He said that the spirit of the, of what the initiative was, was to protect the commercial fishing aspect of that. And, you know, Scott, we talked about neighborhood compatibility and then character, and this is part, to me, when I look at it, it's all subjective, but it's part of the character of what a working waterfront in this area is. Because if we look at it like we have, now, I'm not saying it's possible, but you could look at the southern end of the waterfront, and you could say, have you some recreational, like, you know, fishing shop or whatever, you know what I mean? That's focused more on the, on the sports fishing guy. But this little area right here, you know, I, I'm leaning to leaving it the way you guys have it right there. That's where, what I'm thinking after hearing everybody, that's my feeling on it.
And I can throw something out that might alleviate some potential fears, if, if Measure D, "commercial or non-commercial recreational," meaning virgin, I'll just use virges, or patriot sport fishing, aren't protected under Measure D. Right?
Correct.
That's the general consensus we had in the subcommittee, that's the next item up. So assuming that the commercial sport fishing operations are not protected under Measure D, they're the grandfathered ones, what's left in, in recreational fishing? Mom and pop fishing off the pier or a tackle shop? There's not much else or slips.
Okay.
It's about the only other thing that could potentially take over.
Okay.
Commercial fishing.
So this would, this does relate to slips usage there, okay? So if we add in a language like "commercial" or "non-commercial recreational," they could have a bunch of sport fishing boats there, is that what, you know, is that where?
No, that would eliminate the sports fishing boats.
And we're going to deal with the sports fishing boat nine to six. We're going to get definitive definition from the Lord.
So it tightens up the sport fishing boat definition a little bit, we hope.
Okay, so Eric, just so I'm clear, your feeling on this with the experience that you have, saying what Ron was saying, and basically lacing in the language right out of Measure D, you like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we have consensus? I don't think anybody's ever had consensus with Measure D.
It's, it's, it's good that you do, because when we pushed this out, it's important that we were able to move it through, and then we went through both these boards, and the decision-making was unanimous. It means a lot, so it's great that you're able to work through it, I appreciate it. Item five.
So five relates to another perceived ambiguity in Measure D, and that's, that is the wording, quote, "clearly incidental thereto," end quote. So the question that the two, that the subcommittees struggled with was, does clearly, clearly incidental thereto as it relates to Measure D, is that something that fishermen need, or is it directly supportive or, or to them? Which brings us back to the staff's examples, for instance, of a commercial fisherman being able to land his fish on the dock and sell it. able to land his fish on the dock and sell it, or serving pancakes on the dock. And his argument for serving pancakes on the dock is because that money helps me remain a commercial fisherman because I can use it to work on my gear and so on and so on. So, and that's an extreme example, but again, it's the creep thing. We're trying to address the creep, the creep issue. So the subcommittee, the combined subcommittee, was in agreement on this one. And it means, just what it says up on the screen, which is something that fishermen need or is directly supportive to or of them. And I'd even go even farther than that, as directly supportive, I mean, I would say directly supportive of their fishing activities.
I would even go a little further to Ron and say that it has to be a waterfront-dependent.
Independent?
Yeah. You know, so, so if you're selling, you know, essentially a tackle, you know, if you're buying tackle from somebody, it could, they could have a viable...
That's a good idea.
It could be supportive a block away, out of the Measure D area. But landing fish could only be done at the...
At the waterfront.
At the waterfront. So Scott, what would be the appropriate term for...
Can you kind of go with what you just said a minute ago? I was still catching up with Ron's comments.
Having it as waterfront-dependent use or harbor front-dependent use. Because, you know, if you're selling pancakes, you know, you could be selling pancakes a block away, or if you're selling tackle, you know, that tackle could be sold on the other side of the street or a block away. But if you're landing fish, you've got to land fish at the waterfront or at the harbor front. So I think that's critical to get that in.
I don't have an issue with that. If you like that, that's not a problem. It's, again, it's a definitional, just adding on that language to it's fine.
So what would the terminology be that you would see?
I mean, I probably want to spend a little time massaging it so it fits with the other one, but I mean, the intent of what you have is clear.
Okay.
And that's that it's waterfront, you know, it's a waterfront, a waterfront-dependent use. That can be added on to the directly supportive of fishing activity. I'll make it so it makes sense though.
Okay, please. Joe?
I like the suggestion that something fishermen need in the conduct of their fishing activities, it just make, it just eliminates one other aspect for, you know, mangling what we're trying to do. Need, what kind of needs, fishing activity needs.
Yeah. So instead of two of them, we might suggest their fishing activities, directly supportive of their fishing activities.
Yes.
And then, and then the tack on that you folks were talking about, Jerry was just talking about, is that there would be another phrase at the end, there's a wonderful opportunity at the end to talk about the waterfront component of that as well, as a definition of clearly incidental thereto.
Okay. I see everybody's head nodding. Are we in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. You're on roll, Ron.
Richard, are you good?
Yeah, yeah, I like what you said, Jerry.
Everybody else's head was nodding. Don't want to be somebody talking live. They'll all get called on it.
So the last item, didn't we just do clearly incidental in... Thank you. That's number six. Thanks. So the last item relates to the, what is, what is a commercial fishing activity and a non-commercial recreational fishing activity? What is that? There's, Scott and Eric can talk about the history of some of the challenges that the cities faced with getting to that, but we identified that as something that needs to be clarified. And I like the phrase that you came up with, Scott, which is mom and pop. So that's the question that we have for us, and I'm not stating it very well, is right in front of us. And then how do they, and how is that demonstrated? How does someone demonstrate that they are a non-commercial recreational fishing activity?
If we could ask for a little background, it sounds like Eric and Scott had some instances of how this has been problematic in the past. Well, so Measure D is, you know, commercial, licensed commercial, obvious, Jeremiah. Non-commercial recreational, well, what does that mean? And in the past, it's, it has been interpreted, non-commercial recreational means the verges sport fishings of the world were okay in Measure D. It's a, it's a non-commercial fishing recreational activity. That's how it had been interpreted in the past, where when we started our subcommittee group work, I think Joe, you, Joe, you and Jerry, one of you two brought in the arguments for and against Measure D, and we started, that went along with the ballot. It went along with the ballot. We started really drilling in on what that meant, and it was pretty darn clear that the proponents of Measure D, Joe Giannini and Ed Ewing, the president and CFO at the time and others, were worried about Breb's sport fishing and a couple other verges-like operations expanding out and taking over the commercial fishing sector. And so they, they wrote Measure D to say, "commercial fishing and non-commercial," meaning not the verges of the world, not the Brebs of the world, the mom and pop fishing. That's where we came up with that term, you know, this basic citizen fishing in their own personal boats or from shore and tackle shops kind of stuff, and not the passenger-for-hire kind of boats.
It might also be helpful to talk about the word "commercial" as it's being referred to in Measure D. The city has defined a commercial fishing operation as...
One that lands X amount of thousands of dollars of product per year, depending on the size of your boat, fish tickets from state fish and game.
So, you know, I know this is getting, we talked about it in our joint meeting too, but we had a discussion, you know, I have concerns on this with the, it's kind of like the, you know, residential application in commercial areas where you have, it's always going to be easier to have somebody come in with a 50-foot Grand Banks and put a pole out the back and have a recreational fishing license and have a slip right there and, you know, right there on the tee pier, you know? And that's great for them, but what happens when we get a squid run or, you know, how do, I don't know if we can do anything about it because of the way Measure D is written, but how can we quantify, how can we clarify this so that, you know, once again, the highest, the highest and best use for that slip is somebody with a commercial license, not somebody who has a Grand Banks that he takes out once every nine months to drop a line for rockfish. So I'm not necessarily endorsing this, but one, Ron started going there, do we want to put some kind of a qualifier? Would that fix be some kind of a qualifier or proof of recreational fishing beyond just, yeah, you got a rod hole, a couple rocket holders and some rods? When, you know, Measure D was enacted and in the years since, up until very recently, there wasn't any, aside from the occasional sport boat they might tie up at the pier, and those always came and went, no one's ever lasted and been forever there, until Morbay Landing built out more slips. As you know, when verges was there, and even Brebs over where GAFCO is now, verges had all sport fishing boats in there, and you had Tiger's Fall, and you really didn't have any small or even medium or large recreational fishing boats peppered in there. It's only until very recently that those have really started to show up at Morbay Landing. But I can see in the future with the, with slips becoming harder and harder to find and being, you know, abandoned, you know, marinas being abandoned in, you know, San Francisco and Ventura and LA and, you know, all up and down the West Coast, that we become a very attractive point, especially in that secluded, you know, in that protected area. So that's a risk I see coming up, and I don't know how to deal with that.
All of that is, are viable concerns and/or discussion items, but what we're faced with with Item 6 is trying to define a non-commercial recreational, what is non-commercial recreational fishing? That's what Number 6 is for. Your quite valid point is, which you've made several times tonight, and the commercial fishermen are going to love you for that, is an associative, but I think, an overarching issue. So what we need to do is we need to determine, if we can, these two bodies need to come up with what we, to help for the, update for the GP and the LCP, what does non-commercial recreational fishing mean? What is that? What is the definition of that activity? How is it characterized? How can you, we assure ourselves that if we walk down the waterfront and we see something going on, we go, oh, yeah, that's a non-commercial recreational fishing activity, and it's in the Measure D zone, and that's exactly what's okay to be there because that's what the voters enacted.
Okay. There's nothing in Measure D that specifies that the slips or that, you know, were to be allowed to be recreational fishing.
That's right.
So is there any way that we can clarify that, you know, recreational fishing off the pier is great, but, you know, it would be, there's no guarantee or there's no privilege to have a boat in Measure D for recreational fishing, seeing as you have the, essentially you have the whole rest of the harbor and all the rest of the slips and moorage where it could be.
How do you insert the moorage issue into this topic? I mean, functionally, how do you do that?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So it specifically says, "no approval shall be granted for any new passenger-for-hire." Is verges not a passenger-for-hire? I mean, ultimately? I mean...
No. Passenger-for-hire is a term of art in the industry that has a pretty specific purpose. You pay money to get taken from point A to point B.
Okay. So it doesn't have any...
Well, they don't take, they don't, you don't pay money to go from point A to point B, you pay money to go out and fish and come back again.
See, I thought that we were talking about the tiki type of boat.
Which is not quite the same thing.
Right, right.
It's transporting bodies from, or stuff.
So passenger-for-hire would be a tiki boat? You know, would fall under that, correct? Like the lost aisle or something?
Well, they're coming back.
But they're also...
No, they're going out to tour around the bay.
Right, and then they come back.
And then they come back. Well, but is that any different than the commercial fishing boat where you get picked up and you go out and you run around the ocean and then you come back?
That seems to be passenger-for-hire to me.
I don't have the answer. Truly, I just have, I just have a bias based upon my 40 years in the marine industry, which passenger-for-hire means you're going to take me somewhere that I need to go and you're going to drop me off when I get there. You might bring me back, but I'm going to pay you to do that as well.
Let me get back there.
Yeah, like a ferry boat.
Eric, do you have any, do you have any help on this, you know, as far as clarifying? Do you have a, you know, in your...
I wish I had the magic bullet. Part of this may come back to the highest and best use thing again. Scott and I were just chatting offline a little bit here, you know, something we've not discussed is our lease management policy and the potential to weave highest and best use or commercial fishing preference in the lease policy and what the leaseholders can do on a case-by-case basis. We're, we put something in there, but it, unlike with commercial fishing where they've got fish landing receipts they get from Fish and Game for every time they come ashore and land something, and we show proof of that, it's a pretty simple metric, there isn't a metric with the 50-foot Grand Banks with the rod holder and the guy's got a license. How do you monitor it? There's really no way. Certainly the, you know, folks like that tend to pay a higher price for slips because it's a different demographic and commercial fishing is a little harder to find slips for in that regard and from an affordable standpoint. So there's kind of like a neighborhood going residential, and I could see the pressure for that happening. And it has happened to a degree at Morbay Landing, and because, you know, as you know, he's got a number of boats in there that sort of the Grand Banky, they have got rod holders and the fishermen or the owners, you know, may or may not have licenses, but they, he's getting more money rented to those guys than he can get to get commercial fishermen to come in. So I don't have a magic answer to it, I wish I did. Measure D says commercial recreational fishing. Well, short of coming up with a metric for what a recreational fishing boat is and some way to enforce it, which I don't know how, where you can go with it.
Go ahead, Dan. You were referring to the pier, the tee pier. Now, the tee pier and the city slips, those are all designated for commercial fishing boats as far as their fee base and such. So if, when Jerry was talking about, in the case of a big squid run and these boats came in, well, they still have those as a priority, they can use those areas. They're not going to necessarily go over to Morbay Landing and rent those slips. And if they did, you know, then the 50-foot Grand Banks is going to have to put up with that because that's the nature of the beast. That's what we have going on there. So I don't know how much of a problem it's going to be, but I can see the concern. So unless we can come up with some sort of way of regulating that, which I have no idea right now.
Say it may fit better in the lease policy. I mean, slipwise, the slips we have are exclusively for commercial fishing boats. We rent them out when they're gone and out, you know, for seasons and to make some extra money. Piers are sort of self-regulating because the 50-foot Grand Banks doesn't want to tie the pier.
Exactly.
And the recreational boats that do are on their way to the junkyard, so piers are kind of self-regulating, but it's the Morbay Landing that, and GAFCO a little bit, and Harborhead a little bit, because they each have a little bit of slip space.
My concern related to the idea, we put it into the general plan or LCP or zoning code, that those slips in that area have to be just rented for commercial fishing operations and not for recreational. We make those folks that have those lease spaces build those docks and slips. And they, if they're not getting folks to lease those spaces, then those are not viable. And I, so my offline conversation that we were having was, I don't want to go there because that creates a, you know, we're telling them they have to do these improvements, they need to be economically viable, and if they're not, that's a problem. And general plan, LCP and zoning code are not quickly changed because it has to go through the city and the coastal commission to change it. So if you wanted to do something like that, it is something that can be pursued through the lease process that Eric regulates versus this. I don't know if you want to go there, I was just, it's problematic because of the requirements and what we make people do there. And if you have somebody that's required to build those and they can't lease out space to them, then it becomes economic, it's not economically viable, so that becomes a problem.
Well, Scott, yeah, I don't want to make it, you know, I don't want to put a financial hardship on anybody. And I would like to, I would rather see a boat in a slip than have it empty, you know, just for uses. But, you know, it's kind of like, it's kind of like the same problem where we have with the, you know, with Mission Creep on some of the leasehold sites there in Measure D. How do we get it when, when there is a need for the commercial fishing? How can we prioritize that they are able to use that resource and that boats can, or say that boats that can go somewhere else, go somewhere else for that timeframe? You know, so...
Part of the issue is being reactive to the scenario that you're finding out there. It's being nimble enough to address the situation as you see it out there, as it exists at the time, right? So the policy things we came up with, as Eric, you know, pointed out, is it's kind of the minimum necessary to like, at least somebody's sort of putting up at least the minimum front that they're doing recreational fishing. And for a while, that might not be an issue. It becomes an issue, we really didn't know what they're, that they're actually using it, is when all the slips are full and the commercial fishing folks can't, don't have a place to tie up.
So Scott, let me interject. So Scott, let me interject, I'm sorry to, you know, I just had a thought, it's a rarity, so. Can, can we include standard language in the CUP, you know, as far as a condition as the, as it goes through the planning commission, to require that there's a priority for, in those areas, in that area of measure D, that there's a priority for commercial, for commercial boats, commercial fishing boats as top priority, second priority is recreational fishing boats, third priority is mom and pop, you know, something like that. Is that illegal?
I'm sure we could, you know, it runs right back to the issue, is how enforceable is it?
Well, it'd only be enforceable when the problem was demonstrated.
Yeah, I mean, so it would be another way to do it, I mean, like I said, the quickest way, you know, to, that's one way to do it, it's on the books, and that way paying attention to it. It's also as soon as the harbor department becomes aware of the lack of availability of slips down there, that you put that into the lease policy and say, okay, now we're shutting it off, you know, for the recreational fishermen, and we're only gonna allow these, you know, moving forward, you know, until we have availability of slips again, you know, to have it, so that would be, that can be written into the policy, it can be changed fairly quickly. That's, that's a meeting or two of council a month away.
As it relates to city moorage?
So all of those are, I mean, so do you...
As opposed to private.
City is a problem.
That would be something that has to change, so we have to change our lease policy to require harbor to approve all subleases for slips. That would be the only way to do it, it doesn't happen right now, I didn't understand that, so apologies.
Yeah, currently on our, so all of our waterfront leases, you know, business ABC comes in, retail shop, we approve sublease. Marina Square has got 25 slips, we don't individually approve who they put in those slips, they just manage them, so we don't get into doing subleases for slip signs.
So getting back to number six.
I was gonna just say, this might be off-base, but it's in, is there any way, like, if you're a commercial fisherman, you're a captain, and you have a captain for, then if you're a recreational fisherman, you know, is there something in that genre that can be laced as far as the use of that, like, for non-commercial, you don't have to be a captain, correct?
Yeah.
And so is there something, like you say, when you're a commercial, you got fishing game, you got all this stuff that you gotta deal with, right? So, and you have to be a captain, isn't that, is there something that can be said on, from that aspect of it?
On the recreational side?
Yeah.
You can go buy, you can go buy a 50-foot grand banks to market.
Yeah, I know.
Go fishing on it, and you don't have to have anything.
Right, and that's what I'm kind of saying, is like, if you're not a captain of a...
Fish license.
Yeah, yeah, and if you're not a captain, then maybe you don't qualify for a commercial slip.
Commercial fishermen aren't captains.
Pardon?
Commercial fishermen, most of them do not have captain's license.
Okay.
They're not all captains. An official license costs 48 bucks.
So my suggestion to move this along, and I'm not trying to cut it off, my suggestion is that, because we're talking about trying to additionally, try to, trying to provide some additional definition for non-commercial recreational, quote-unquote, is that what's up there on the screen, that we put a period in after the word operations, and don't try to define a metric for recreational fishing activities, because that really wasn't what got us here. What got us here was the commercial sport fishing issue.
Well, if our concern is really to sort of defeat the boat owner who really is posing as a recreational sport fisher, but really just has a big boat that he just likes to go toying around in the water, so maybe we should just give Eric some additional ammunition as him must show evidence that he engages in this behavior on a regular basis, okay? So that's, that's the important wording. We want the person who becomes the lessee for this mooring knows that he has to engage in recreational sport fishing on a regular basis, whatever regular means, okay? Such as, now, and he can say, well, once a year means regular, well, you can argue, no, but I mean, so it gives you something, it gives you some language to do something other than just pound the desk, you know?
Are you finished?
I am.
I was, so this is meant to address city-owned slips?
Yeah.
Correct?
No.
Everything in measure D.
Okay, I see, so that slips...
City-owned slips, GAFCO...
The city-owned slips are currently regulated.
Yeah, yeah, they're 100% commercial fishing, there's no question on those. Our municipal code has specified to say that.
And they do go out to, if one of us leave the port for a few months, which we do, and then it gets settled out to...
Sometimes commercial fishing.
If there is a commercial fisherman around or otherwise.
Sure.
So what we're trying to do is we're trying to protect as many slips in the private sector, in those privately developed slips that could be used for commercial, commercial boats, but are, would more than likely, if let to market, market forces, be rented to a higher, you know, to a recreational boat that could pay a higher.
Correct, yeah, I didn't understand that, I think where I was going was, so is the room, Eric, down there, that you can foresee being built out in the measure D area, being built out to?
Just in front of Harbor Hut, the last little section of that project, that joint project between GAFCO, Harbor Hut, and Morro Bay Landing, there's on paper, and the current plans, put a few more slips in there.
And that's a private, is that privately owned?
No, that's, that's lease...
Between... It's not city moorage.
It's not city managed, it's...
Jared, that's Jeremiah's question, is it city moorage or is it a private lessee moorage?
Between GAFCO and Harbor Hut, that area is private.
Yes. So where are we going with number six here?
Nowhere.
Yeah, let's, let's get back to it and see, we had one suggestion from Joe, you know, as far as changing the wording. Do you want to reiterate that, Joe, so we get back to, get back on track here?
Okay, let's see. Must show certain defined evidence in order to demonstrate conducting recreational sport fishing on a regular basis.
Okay.
So at least it establishes a, you know, a minimum standard below which you could, someone could complain that the lease has been violated because they haven't been conducting recreational sports fishing on a regular basis, they've just put a few poles and run out once every two years, something like that.
We talked about it, you could, is this on? Yeah, okay, sorry, I was talking to Eric about, by default, he's the one that has to deal with this, and so I was like, so what if, what if we put a number on it, this is how many times you have to go out, I mean, we don't know that they're gonna go out and fish, but they're going out, I mean, I guess so, they're using it, and they'd have to come, but they'd have to come in and like, check in, you know, to sign off, and you'd have to, you know, that's a lot of, that's a lot of regulation.
No, I was intentionally not putting a number on it because I don't want to impose that kind of a burden on you, it's just that, Eric, if you, if you came to a conclusion that this person was really sort of bending the provisions, then, then you could say...
Well, yeah, I have a little trouble with that because we're setting up a rule and we don't have a way to enforce it, you know, and stuff, so, and so then, so we have, we have this item here, and then we also have Ron brought up the point of just putting a period at the end of the operation and leaving that whole, that whole qualifier out. So those are our two suggestions on that.
So let's ask one more question, because I was talking to Eric about this, you know, aside here, and I asked him, I said, so, I mean, are we having an issue with this? And he's like, oh, maybe a little bit. And so Eric, I mean, do you, do you, is this helpful to, you know, sort of nip that in the bud a little bit? I mean, if it's helpful, then you should tell them.
Or better yet, what would be helpful?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, so if... As I stated earlier, I don't have a magic answer for it. I wish there was as simple as fish tickets or something that could prove fishing, a way around, you know, to, to sort of socially engineer making it more attractive for our leaseholders to rent commercial fishermen, maybe in the, again, back to the lease policy and that we don't require them to pay percent gross for commercial fishing slips, for commercial fishermen. That's kind of a sideways around this to encourage commercial fishing activity to remain, but again, that recreational fishermen are, especially in the larger slips, are gonna pay more for their slips. It's a hard economic model to fight against, somebody wanting to rent to one guy that wants to pay 500 a month versus somebody else that wants to pay 250 or can't pay 250.
And you're bumping up against measure D.
And you're bumping up against measure D.
The language of measure D.
Did you just say there's an incentive in the lease?
No, there's not.
There's not.
We could build something into the lease incentive.
Yeah, that seems like the only thing.
Well, that's, that's not gonna happen very quickly because you're talking about having to wait until all of those, those subject leases are up for renewal.
True.
Unless you decide to renegotiate every single one of them right now, which I don't think, yeah, yeah, which I don't think is gonna happen.
To answer the original question, does that help? Any kind of a rule, you're gonna have to have some kind of a metric.
So Eric, what about if, I mean, this is, they've got to go out behind, you know, once a year they have to go up past, you know, Morro Bay One and radio in, I mean, to the harbor patrol, and you can click them off or something on a, on a list. You could see them on radar and you could hear the radio call.
So, so let's, let's wind it back. So you, Eric, you said, I have a few that are questionable. What's your hook? How do you, how do you verify now? You don't have, you don't have any of this stuff to...
No, I have nothing to verify now.
So...
At zero.
So is this something you could at least be like, yo, I can go find out whether they're doing these things?
It gives me more than what I have now.
Well, we've already, we've already addressed the concept or the language, not the concept, the language of measure D primarily, so let's pull that down into this.
How so?
The, what's this body recommended is a particular definition for the word primarily as in item number four. And, and maybe that same definition, if you will, if it was incorporated into item number six, would help to, while it doesn't establish a metric, give some additional shape to non-commercial recreational.
I, I like what Joe's saying, it's not that you're trying to quantify it, it's like giving you a little bit more tools. You're not there to polish it, but you could, you know, you can be there and you can say, hey man, this guy's even left, you know, in two years. You got at least a little bit of language that you can work with, just a tool, you know, that gives you a little bit of less ambiguity on it, I guess.
Here's a thought, reworking the language to, to place the burden on the boat owner to demonstrate that he's engaging in recreational sport fishing, okay? And, you know, typically whoever's got the burden is the one that loses, so if he's doing some things that he shouldn't be doing, it'll be, you know, and if he, and if he can make the right noises, then, you know, so be it, but if he can't say anything except I, I have a pole that I've attached to my boat, you know, he hasn't demonstrated to a reasonable extent to you or whoever's making the decision that he's really engaging in that conduct.
I get back that, I think that's...
That sounds, that sounds reasonable to me.
Ron, does that sound?
And I might add...
If it helps the city, sure.
And, you know, human nature being what it is, when someone reads that they have the burden, it's even more of an incentive to, you know, do the right thing and not bend the rules.
Does that work with, for you, Eric? I mean, does that give you a tool?
It gives me a tool.
Do you still want, we still want all those things at the bottom? You must demonstrate showing us things like these as examples, maybe in prosthesis or something.
You gotta bring the fish to us. I mean, yeah, I mean, that's pretty obvious stuff, rod, gear, tackle, fishing license, I mean, it's all pretty common sense, if you're a recreational fisherman, that's what you're gonna have.
But Eric, I think, I think, yeah, I think...
Check and see if the tips are rusty if they're still in the package.
Yeah, unless we quantify that, though, I think, I think in this pathway, the less we quantify it, the better we would be, the more we quantify it, then that takes more discretion away from you.
And maybe that's where we go back to Ron's thought on other language, things that they need are directly supportive to them, to recreational fishermen.
Yeah, which, to go back to the grand banks thing for a second, that's gonna be hard for a grand bank, for 50-foot grand banks to demonstrate that that, that's what that vessel's for. Just as an extreme example.
No, 20-foot radon or something would be easier.
Sure.
So, okay, does that give you some language to work with, and does the rest of the harbor advisory board concur?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the idea would be that we lose the example part, use the language that Joe came up with, with the boat owner demonstrating that he's doing recreational fishing activities, the satisfaction of, you know, city, okay, so, all right.
Okay. Okay, conclusions? We've got, we've got any recommendation from the joint HAB, HAB slash PC will be forwarded to the general plan advisory committee, GPAC, and general plan and local coastal plan update consultant team for inclusion in the appropriate sections of the general plan and local coastal plan and zoning code. Do we have to make any...
Nothing else, you've kind of given us, this is the stuff you want us to do, we'll make it happen. Then you'll get to see it again, because it has to come back through the planning commission at some point, and our planning advisory committee, and when we have the information ready, Eric will have it, he can bring it to the tab and show it to you.
Okay, I guess, you know, give anybody a chance to make a closing comment. Does anybody wish to say anything else?
I want to say something. I just want to thank, thank the harbor advisory board for what you guys do, and thanks for your expertise.
Joe?
I would, I would like to do that as well, thank you guys.
Richard, you've never missed an opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, you guys, appreciate it, and thanks, Eric, for all the work you do.
So Ron, do you want to pull your?
Sure, anybody can say anything that they'd like.
Sure. Lynn?
It's been a fun meeting, and we didn't have the right conclusions.
Jeremiah?
Yeah, I just wanted to also say the same with the planning commission, thank you very much for, for all of the input and so forth, and please take the time, there, we have, this is the sixth edition, we've been printing these since 2011, a couple of years have been missed, but I think it's very informative, goes into our sport fishing, for higher sport fishing, deals with our aquaculture operations here in the bay, and various, I think you'll be surprised to see some of the various fish landings that are here, a lot of people are surprised to find out that we're usually in the top three ports... A lot of people are surprised to find out that we're usually in the top three ports on the west coast of the United States for swordfish and things like that.
Is this available on, on the city website at any point or?
No, that's available at MBCFO.com, Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's, excuse me, Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's Organization.com. It's also available on the cable, the joint cable liaison committee's website.
I'll get it on our, on the city's website, on the harbor page.
Okay, yeah, I'll put it, I'll get it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, great link, that would be a great link to have on that. So, okay, well, thanks.
Wait a minute.
Dana?
Yeah, I would like to say, you know, it's been really good working with you guys. I wasn't here just with the, with the ad hoc before, but the working waterfront is the heart of our city. It's what makes us. And anytime we can bring forth what goes on, we're happy to do so and hope to work with you guys again.
And then one thing I thought of that maybe you could sponsor, the city could sponsor a mandatory fishing derby for your, for your commercial fishing.
Catch a certain number of fish.
Yeah.
You got to prove you can fish.
So I'd like to, I'd like to thank staff for your time and effort in making all this happen. This has been going on a really long time. And Scott, very early on in this meeting, you very concisely, briefly and concisely described the process of what happens next. Could you, if you could just repeat that as closing, please?
So, just on, yeah, okay. So, so we'll take the information that you've provided this evening. We'll formalize it and we'll push it into the, the draft documents for the general plan and LCP. It's a combined document and into the zoning code where appropriate, probably in the use section for some of this stuff. And then those draft documents will, will become public drafts and will be reviewed by the general plan advisory committee, moving on from them to the planning commission and subsequently to the city council for adoption. So, and, and that process is supposed to be complete by September of this year, so we can send it off to coastal for certification. Certification, I'm not sure how long that's going to take, but it can take up to a year. But we've been working closely with coastal commission on it. We've gotten back their first go at the plan Morro Bay, which is the general plan and LCP, about 85-ish, 90% of it anyway, and got good comments back from them. So we'll be ready probably in April to release, April, May-ish, to release a draft of plan Morro Bay. So it's coming, it's coming quick. And that information will also be conveyed to the harbor advisory board through Eric once we have the draft available publicly. It'll go through, you'll be able to see it. And we're going to have it out there for a while so people can, has a little bit of a soak before we hit the general, GPAC and planning commission because it's not a short document. Couple hundred pages plus.
Okay, I'd like to thank staff. And at this point, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Cool, thanks.
Thanks, Ron.